Test, test. One, two. One, two. Test, test. One, two. One, two. One, two. Test, test. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. Test, test. Test, test. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two, one, two. Test, test. One, two. One, one, two. 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 Alright, that's good. One, two. One, two. One, two. One, two. Test, one, two. One, two. One, two.
We have one minute to crush our heads, remember? One minute. But I still do what I do. Think about lollipops and cheese. Ever since on cheese. You know how I know where it's at? People smell it and they're like, "Shh."
Good evening, good evening, everyone. And thank you for joining us tonight for the Newark Public Schools Regular School Board Meeting, being held tonight here at Chancellor Avenue School. I will hand it over to Ms. List for the call of order.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 et cec, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger, El Nuevel Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers, and by distribution to administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of this meeting notice was forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting, Tuesday, January 28, 2020, 6:05.
Thank you, Ms. List. If everyone can please join us in the flag salute. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Mr. Bledsoe? Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. List. And now I would like to bring up Principal Pitts for greetings from the principal. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, distinguished board members. And Assalamualaikum to our distinguished board members, Superintendent Leon, any other district officials and dignitaries, the Chancellor Avenue school-wide community, inclusive of staff members and students who are with us this evening, and all community members who are with us as well. My name is Sakina Pitts, and I stand before you as a proud graduate of Chancellor Avenue School from 1990. A graduate of Science High School here in Newark, and now the principal of Chancellor Avenue School. Welcome to Chancellor Avenue, home of the Falcons, and also a rising Blue Ribbon School here in the mighty, mighty South Ward. So, really just excited about this evening for two reasons. One, January is School Board Recognition Month in the state of New Jersey, so please give a warm congratulations to our school board members. You know, just in terms of public awareness, you know, just want to say thank you for your hard work and efforts and your advocacy for the students of Newark. The other reason is, fun fact, I guess, I can't remember hosting, Chancellor being the host school for public board meetings in like the seventeen years that I've been in the building, so I'm excited and welcome to everyone. Chancellor is on the rise. I just wanted to, you know, talk about, you know, we've definitely made incremental gains in ELA and math as it relates to state testing data for the last couple of years. We've made more dramatic gains in growing students as it relates to testing data. And we really are on a quest to lowering chronic and severe absenteeism here at Chancellor Avenue School. It is one of our strategic goals, and we're really doing a good job with that as well. The last thing that I wanted to talk about really quickly is just the enhancement to the student experience here at Chancellor Avenue School through enrichment in the arts. Our students are part of Girls Who Code, and even after the citywide convention that the students attended, we were fortunate enough to be able to have funding for our students to continue coding here at Chancellor Avenue School through June. They're also engaged in robotics, cheerleading. We have a girls' basketball team, a boys' basketball team, a National Junior Honor Society, hip-hop dance, and you'll see momentarily a performance from our Falcon Tappers, giveaway Falcon Tappers, under the leadership of our artist-in-residence, Mr. Maurice Chestnut, who's here with us every Tuesday. Mr. Chestnut, I also wanted to acknowledge our illustrious debate team who just brought home the third-place win out of ninety-five beginning teams. And so, you know, we're really proud, and this has been through the hard work, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Carlos Estacio from the Newark Debate Academy, who not only supports our debate team for enrichment purposes after school, but we have in-class debate support as well that has been funded through Title I. And so, we're really ecstatic about, you know, these rich experiences that Chancellor Avenue students are able to engage in on a day-to-day basis. I just kind of thought, you know, as the students brought back the third-place trophy this weekend, that in distinguished schools, usually in the four-year, there's a casing, and it speaks volumes without saying anything what the capabilities of the students in that building are able to do before you even meet the students. And so, we look forward to Chancellor having the casing so that we can house our awards as students here begin to compete not only citywide, but statewide, nationally, and globally. So, thank you and welcome. So, at this time, will the students be performing now?
Yes, your students may perform now.
Alright, so at this time, we have our Chancellor Debate Team, who will engage in an exhibition debate, so there will be no judging of the debate. It will be an eight-minute debate, a little more brief than a normal debate, and then we'll have a performance by the Chancellor Falcon Tappers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ruby McGaskill. I am the English Social Studies teacher here at Chancellor. This is my second year here. I'm also a former Newark student. I was at Pergola Avenue School and then at Chancellor Annex, so now I'm here teaching at Chancellor. I'm also serving as the debate coach here at Chancellor. So, I just wanted to let you know, thank you, how hard they've been working. It was really a blessing to bring home out of a hundred teams third place, so they really do deserve a round of applause for that. Thank you so much. So, we're going to do just a really quick abbreviated debate, where they will argue an affirmative argument means they agree with the resolution, and a negative means that they disagree with the resolution, okay?
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Leon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ahora Jackson. I am an eighth grader here at Chancellor Avenue School, and tonight I will be explaining the resolution of this debate. Resolved. Teachers should carry weapons to protect students against mass shootings. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ahora Jackson. I will be arguing the affirmative argument that teachers should be armed to protect students from mass school shootings. It is really sad to see that teachers have to carry guns to defend themselves and students from school shootings, but that's the age that we live in. Believe it or not, we need weapons in order to protect us. If a teacher has a classroom of twenty students who are trapped with an active shooter at their door, the presence of a firearm can help save lives. Even the knowledge that a teacher might be armed could be enough to stop an unstable individual from committing an act of violence. If our teachers are trained in the appropriate use of a firearm, then they can take the shot before police officers arrive to contain the situation. In a best-case scenario, it may be two to four minutes before the first officials arrive at the school to confront a shooter. A teacher could react much faster. According to CNN, there have been forty-five school shootings last year. That's nearly an average of one school shooting a week. That's a lot. In 2019, school shootings with injuries were totaled up to twenty-five. Fifty-one people were killed or injured in a school shooting. Eight people were killed, forty-three people were injured, five students or children were killed, and three school employees were also killed. In one incident in Camden, New Jersey, a ten-year-old boy attending a high school football game was shot and later died. In order for this to stop, we need weapons at our school to protect us. How many innocent people are going to die before we notice that we need weapons? How many students are going to get their education taken away before we take action? President Trump once said, "Every child deserves to grow up in a safe community, surrounded by a loving family, and to have a future filled with opportunity and with hope." I respectfully thank you for your time.
What if, what if the person who was, what if the person who was causing the mass shootings was not unstable?
The teachers should be able to have that weapon to protect us, though.
Don't you think the teachers could use it against students?
That's the reason we should give background checks to make sure that they wouldn't do anything to harm other children.
But who said the background checks were perfect?
No one said that. We never said that.
Good evening. My name is Esther Patrick, and today I will be representing the negative side, supporting the claim of why teachers shouldn't carry guns to protect students from mass shootings. There is not an unspoken rule that teachers should give their life to save their students. Teachers are humans too and can be selfish and make mistakes. According to theconversation.com, exposure to violence can harm the emotional and mental development of young children and adolescents. There is no way that students and staff that can be completely safe with a weapon in the same room as them or near. An average of eight-point-six percent reported using illicit drugs in the past month. Also, an average of nine-point-five percent qualified for a diagnosis of abuse substance use disorder. If we know this is happening, if we know this is happening, then why should we do this? According to securitymagazine.com, it says, "Teachers should not carry guns because, one, teachers will be the main targets; two, the background checks of teachers are not perfect; and, three, guns can cause an illusion of power." According to www.74million.org, it says, "Sixty-one percent of teachers are stressed out; fifty-eight say their mental health is not okay." Why would we want to harm them with these dangerous weapons? To justify claims, you have also come up with a few alternatives. One, we can arm more security guards. Two, we can have more security guards around the school to protect the students. And, three, lastly, we can have a safe pit in the basement of every class, every school, to protect them from school shootings. According to blogs.com, it says, "Knowing that there are guns at school will create more anxiety, not less. Bringing more weapons into school invites more possible harm. Students should feel safe, and so do teachers, in order to do their jobs well." Why should we even hurt students and staff getting hurt for the slim chance of protection? It's not set in stone that teachers can protect the students even with a weapon. And on top of that, teachers don't consent on keeping guns in a classroom. We do not know which teachers could be doing all these things, and that is what makes it even scarier. I respectfully thank you for your time.
As you said in your speech, that it, as you stated in your speech, that it is the security guard's responsibility to protect staff and students from mass shooters. But what about Scott Pearson, who was ridiculed as coward of Broward for slaying outside while a gunman killed seventeen students, teachers, and staff members? Were wounded, seven, wounded?
Well, actually, I said that it wasn't actually, I didn't say that it was the security guard's job to protect students, but I think that's why they're here, to protect the school as a whole. And also, I also said, and the Scott Pearson thing doesn't have anything to do with the discussion, because, one, he's a police officer, so he knows how to do his job. Police officers are here to protect us, not hide away from us. So, why was he doing that in the first place?
Let's give them a big round of applause.
Just want to say good job to the debate team here and to Principal Pitts.
So, the only thing that I wanted to do is congratulate the six of you. No wonder you placed the way that you did at the debate tournament the other day. A big round of applause. Are any of their parents here? Are any of their parents here? Where's your mom? Where is she? Go ahead. So, what we're doing at the elementary level is preparing them for high school debate. Carlos Estacio not only was my student, he was one of our debaters. I obviously, no, stay there. Stay, stay, stay. Stay seated. Really, really important. One of the most important things in what I did when I debated and then became a debate coach in high school, both at Science High School, was to critique everybody. So, one of the most important parts, the first two speeches, on the affirmative and the negative, those are the only written speeches. Everybody else has to write their speech while they're doing it, and they only have about eight minutes to prepare during the course of the whole entire time. And then each speaker gets an opportunity to present. So, I just wanted the other two- So I just wanted the other two debaters on both sides, just introduce yourselves to the audience for a big round of applause. Why don't you do so? The microphone is there?
My name?
Yep, to them.
My name is Raven Bennett.
And what grade?
Grade 7.
All right. We got you for two more years. Go ahead.
My name is Jeremiah and I'm in grade 7, too.
Excellent.
My name is Elijah Baden and I'm in 7th.
Awesome.
My name is Belinda Alfo. I am in 8th grade.
Excellent. All right. So I know these six students are going to join. Where are the other debaters from Chancellor? Will all of you stand? This is the whole entire team. A big round of applause to all of them.
Again, if we can just give a round of applause to Principal Pitts, her debate team, and the team.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm going to introduce at this time a very brief performance from the Chancellor Falcon Tappers.
Now, that was very difficult. They deserve another round of applause, please. So thank you, Principal Pitts, the debate team, and the Chancellor Tappers. We just also want to acknowledge the great work they do here at Chancellor Avenue School. They've had the Liberty Science Center Girls of Technology, Chancellor Avenue Takes a Stand Against Bullying, Chancellor Avenue Garden and Kids Fit Nutrition Program, and the Chancellor Avenue Black History Alive for Our Students. Thank you so much, Principal Pitts and your team. And now we will move on, thank you, to the board recognition. And we have some student recognitions. Superintendent Leon?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. We have some very important recognitions this evening. In the city of Newark, we have challenged all of our babies, who are the ages of 3 and 4 years old, and their families, to read during the holiday break. We have a total of only during a couple of days during the holidays, 43,233 minutes of mommies and daddies and all of their family members reading with their babies at home. Let's give all of our Newark families a big round of applause. All right. Last year, we recognized the winner, but did not do so at any public forum. So we are doing that tonight. He is, in fact, the runner-up this year. And his name is Mateo Carlos Rodriguez. Come on up here, Mateo, and you can bring your mommy with you. Come on, mom. Yes. Of all of the three-year-olds last year, he had the largest number of minutes recorded. Ms. Latvales, will you please join me? Ms. Latvales is the Executive Director of Early Childhood here in Newark. How are you? You read more than every boy and girl last year. I want to give you a big congratulations. You want to do a pound? You want to do a pound? We do a pound. All right. This is your baby? Oh, my goodness. Look, you got this award. You get to place it in your room for everyone to see. And then you get this certificate. I'll show you. And now, for this year, the student who is either 3 or 4 years old in Newark, who read the most at home with their family, Mercedes Josephine McMillan. And she was so excited about this honor, and she asked me if her mommy and daddy could join her. So we have asked them to do so. Come here, Mercedes. You see what happened with Mateo? Look, you got your certificate and you get to put it in your living room so that when everyone comes to your house, they get to see how brilliant we all know you are. All right. I want to take a picture next to this little one, too. So it's interesting. We have one of our great teachers at Eastside High School. Sorry, I promoted you. That's right. Vice principal at Eastside High School, and the mommy is a teacher at Ann Street School. So it's great to see that you did that. And look what I have here. Another one of my teachers, and he's a teacher at Newark Collegiate Academy. Let's give him a big round of applause. Well, so it's interesting that we did this. But then we actually tallied all of the schools. Every school that has a 3 and a 4-year-old. And right now, we're going to recognize the school with the highest, greatest, largest number of minutes. Y'all ready? Y'all look ready for something? Here we go. Rainbow Learning Center. Let's give our early childhood provider a big round of applause. I want the whole team to come here. I know that Ingrid Sanida is here as a director, but there are members of the staff, former parents of ours as well. Please join us for a big recognition. Yes. So a lot of people don't know this, but when we say Newark Public Schools, we're talking about all of the schools in Newark, and that includes all of our early childhood providers. We have over 6,000 boys and girls, 3- and 4-year-olds, at all of our early childhood provider centers. Rainbowland is just an example of one of the many incredible early childhood provider centers that we have in the great city of Newark. Little one of my little mommies. Congratulations. All right. So yes, if you are 3 or 4 years old, you can apply and get into any school in Newark or any early childhood provider center. Let's have a big round of applause for Rainbowland. All right, thank you all. So we had a competition, but I wanted one of our students, Maresia Aquino from First Avenue School, to help us get a little started in this part of it. And she's going to do it with a recitation. Come here, Maresia. Maresia is one of those students that can do everything and anything that she puts her mind to. She can sing, she can dance, and she's going to recite this poem for us to get us started this evening.
Hello, my name is Maresia Aquino from First Avenue School. And today, I'll be performing one of my poems called "One More Light." I woke up to reality, wondering, "Where did we go wrong? Why do we need courage to live? Senseless acts make fear grow strong. Somewhere in the process of making choices, we seek to receive rather than to give. We choose to talk rather than to listen, to ignore rather than to heal. We try to change the world in words, not actions. Speak freedom, but not free from fear somehow. What if the road to change begins with acceptance? To embrace one another right here, right now?" Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I pride ourselves for the work that we do. But I wanted to give her mom a big round of applause and a big shout-out. You know, one of the things that I announced when I was a student at Science High School, we would give this Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award. And over years, over time, people have forgotten that. And so one of the things that I announced the other day at a major event was that we would be reinstating this year in June at all of the graduation ceremonies in every single one of our high schools, the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Humanitarian Award. But our responsibility in schools is unfortunately to sometimes educate everyone. And we do that in public education. We want everyone to know the importance of this month. This is not something, a celebration, that we just take because it is a day off from school. There's a lot of learning that must go on, and no better place than in public education to teach it. So the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity has an original oratory contest all throughout the state. And we have winners not too far from us, right here, from the great city of Newark. In third place of all of the students in the city of Newark and throughout New Jersey, Omar Pearson of South 17th Street School. Come on up here, Omar. Come on up here, Omar. Come on, Ms. Johnson. Let me tell you, Ms. Johnson, our deputy superintendent, told me how proud she was of you. We were so proud of you. And I see Dad with his camera. We're going to make sure all these pictures get to you, okay, Dad? All right. Will the members of the board join us? This is your show. Come right here. You hold that. Let me get this paper so no one can see it. I'll hide the cat, the microphone. Let's give them a big round of applause. Third place of the whole state, Newark, New Jersey. I know that that may be weird, but we got great students in our city. Big congratulations. You already know that I'm old. I'm getting older and I forget things. Come here. We have a special recognition for you. Come up here, Maresia. This is for all of the work that you do throughout our city for us, teaching all of the adults how important it is not to forget what it was to be a child. So we have a certificate for you as well, that we know we want you to showcase at home. All right? Right here? All right. There we go. Great job. All right. Board members, don't leave. So you remember how we had the Alpha Phi Alpha competition? Incorporated. Sorry, Madam Board Member Newark, and you're absolutely right. Third place. I was proud of him. I was proud of him. You know, we don't have students involved in these competitions. So if you don't involve our students in competitions, no one's going to know how great they are. But watch this. We involve them in competitions and then they show how great they are. That's what makes Newark Newark. That's what makes Newark Newark. Well, guess what? We won first place in Newark. This is what it's all about. When I call your name and you walk up here, everyone's going to know that there's no second, no fourth, no fifth, numero uno. And it's you. I just wanted to tell you that. So when you get up, so you can feel their energy, okay? Because what I saw from the people here, they love our city. And when somebody does good in our city, they want people to know about it. You with me? You ready? You're, you're ready? All right, I'm going to soup you up real quick. Ready, all right, there we go. Ladies and gentlemen, of all of the students in the state of New Jersey, the first place winner is from Thirteenth Avenue School, Devin Mitchell. All right. All right, we're going to take a quick picture. Here you go, go right here in the middle. There you go. Oh, wait, he's not done? He's not done? So I see a former, a couple of former of my high school students, so they already know what's going to happen. He's number one. So it means we have to see it. Oh, a board member asked, is he ready? That is not the question to be asked. Is he one number one? Ma, is he ready ma?
Good evening, my name is Devin Mitchell. I'm a seventh grade student from Thirteenth Avenue, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. School. Today, I'll be sharing my ideas on what might be Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s perspective of our world today. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Was an honorable man. He knew that with determination and the right mindset, we could achieve anything. African Americans have gone through a long struggle trying to get the equality that we all deserve. But we are still not there yet because we are fighting for our lives, our freedom, and our education. While we have made progress, we still live in an environment where African Americans are being falsely accused for crimes we have not committed. According to experience.com, statistics show that the percentage of homicides committed by African American males have increased by approximately 30% over the last two years. This data also shows that around a quarter of those accusations were people who are falsely accused. Dr. King will say that this is not acceptable. And no one should ever be sued guilty because of the color of their skin. He once said, he who accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who helps cooperate in it. He who accepts evil without protesting against it is really cooperating with it. This is him saying that those who commit injustice and do nothing about it and don't protest are worse than those who stand there and do nothing. When I was in the fifth grade, I was bullied because I was African American. The kids in the school continuously called me, hey, you're black, you're ugly, you're nasty. This affected my life majorly. And to this, to this day, I still think, how may this have changed now, now that I'm a seventh? Do people think different of me? Do they think the same? But today, I want to make that change so that way we all know we are together and we are equal. Dr. King had died approximately 51 years ago. There's no exact truth on what he might think of our world today. But I believe he will still say we need to make that change for equality. And even us young people can help. Because once we take that action, we ensure that future generations have the same mindset for equality. Thank you.
All right. Great job. Was it a great job? Great speech? You know how hard it is to write that? Do you know how hard it is to deliver it? Because he didn't read it, he delivered it. You know? So I just got the pleasure of meeting you, but I've heard great things about you, you know that? And you see that camera back there? Just move up a little bit, we're not going to fall off, just move up. You may have said not nice things about him, but you not here. All right, all right. All right, all right, thank you board members. We have a special guest in the audience, ladies and gentlemen. The Executive Director of the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce is here. The incredible, the distinguished Dr. Struthers. Please come forward. And members of the board, she has taken the opportunity to join us this evening with a very special recognition.
Good evening, everyone. As I said by Superintendent Leon, I am Dr. Sandra Struthers. I am the Executive Director for Jobs for New Jersey's Graduates, which is managed by the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce Foundation. And I am pleased and delighted to stand before you today to recognize some teachers and administrators in our audience for which this recognition is so long overdue. They are from Behringer High School, Dr. Aviles and Ms. Wanda Warmley. If you could come up. And Mr. Hollis and Ms. Elizabeth Clark from Weekway High School. If you could come up, please. This program has been implemented in the district since 2011-12, which was our pilot year. And we have had success ever since we started with our first year at Behringer. The awards were presented initially at the Jobs for America's Graduates National Training Seminar this past summer in July. But they have been recently, recently acknowledged by Tom Bracken, who is the President and CEO of the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce. There's been news in the media, there have been articles in the media as well, and other accolades. And it's my honor to give them this recognition in the presence of Superintendent Leon, members of the board, as well as the community. These awards are called the Five of Five. And for our program, the Five of Five represents five percentages that every program must try to achieve every year in working with students in this program. There are 1,300 programs in the United States as part of Jobs for America's Graduates. Barely 10 to 15% receive this award. So these are not certificates that go to everyone. Here are the five metrics that these people standing on the stage and others who have supported us have met for your students at Behringer and Weekway High School. At least a 90% graduation rate. At least or exceeding 60% employment rate. At least an 80% positive outcomes rate, which means any student who has employment or post-secondary military service. At least 60% full-time job rate. And at least 80% of what we call full-time placement rate. So if you take the students' work, their job, if they're going to school, combine those activities, if they equal to what we would consider full-time work, they have exceeded or met at least 80% of the students that they've served meeting this full-time placement rate. So I want you all to join me in recognizing Mr. Hollis and Ms. Clark for their ability to achieve these metrics for Weekway High School. Please. Ms. Clark has also been deemed what's called the JAG Specialist of the Year. And of the 1,300 teachers that run these kinds of programs around the country, she is one of the few that has received that recognition. Not only this year, but about six or seven years before, Ms. Clark, Weekway High School, Specialist of the Year. We just established what we call Jobs for Newark's Graduates. And with that, that includes all of the schools in Newark who participate in the program. And those metrics that you just heard, the 90% graduation rate, 60% employment rate, 80% post-secondary rate, 80% full-time placement rate. When you combine the data and the results from Behringer and Weekway, we were able to meet a national standard with their combined results as well. So Behringer and Weekway, which is now called Jobs for Newark's Graduates, receive national recognition as well. If we could give them a round of applause. And lastly, I would like to take this opportunity to thank your Superintendent, Mr. Leon. He's been a part of Jobs for America's Graduates when we started in our pilot with our first conference. Janice Shavis is here, is she still here? Janice, please come up. Janice was able to literally find the funding that supported the pilot that allowed this program to flourish. And to members of the board and for those who will start to become a part of Jobs for New Jersey's Graduates and Jobs for Newark's Graduates, I am so very, very grateful. I thank you, I thank you, I thank you. Please, thank you. Give them a round of applause.
All right, thank you, Dr. Struthers, really appreciate you. A big round of applause to Behringer and Weekway High School. So it's really important for those who are in attendance, as well as those who are viewing, to understand that it's not only good enough for us to try to educate everyone's child very well. That is something we're supposed to do. But also, it's about providing them an opportunity after high school, getting them jobs, making sure that they get a job after college. That's the responsibility of what this school district has redefined itself in. This is something that we did in 2012. It had been somewhat forgotten, but not necessarily at all of the schools. We will bring it back to all six comprehensive high schools. Right now, it's mainly at Weekway. It has just started this year at Behringer. It'll be at Central, Eastside, Shabazz. Definitely bringing about and Westside, all of our comprehensive high schools involved in this incredible work. Let's give Dr. Struthers a big round of applause. Members of executive staff, can you begin to get those items? And I would like for you to join me in the center and then you can hand them this way. Many people aren't aware of this, but the New Jersey School Boards Association has dedicated the month of January as the Month of the Board. It is, in fact, every school district in New Jersey, all over 600 of them, are taking the opportunity to recognize them and to honor them. And so I'm putting this resolution on the record. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of the members of the Newark Board of Education and the local school board throughout New Jersey, as we join communities statewide in observing January as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Newark Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staff toward the advancement of our children's education. I have members of executive staff, you could join me in the center and then provide it to each of the respective board members. This is just a small token of appreciation on behalf of the Newark Board of Education. We want to just thank all nine members of the board for your hard work, your commitment to excellence, your efforts at trying to be better every day to service our children well. It's not that hard, hand it to them over the table. We're excited, we've never done this before. All right. All right. We practiced that really, really well. All right. We're almost done. Thank you for indulging us. Thank you for your work here, Mr. Bledsoe. Just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. Bledsoe, who was newly elected by the county for Vice President. A big congratulations to you, really proud of you. And it is a recognition that you have most duly deserved and have earned. And I am pleased to announce that for the first time in New Jersey history, the person who is now the President of the county is, in fact, a member of this Board of Education. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to recognize Newark's own President, the first member of the city of Newark to be the President of the County School Boards Association, our very own, the Honorable Josephine Barcia. Congratulations to all of the board members, thank you members of executive staff. And that ends the student recognitions portion of the meeting.
Can we have a motion, please, to accept the recognitions?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I would just like to briefly recognize our previous chairperson, board member Antonette Baskerville, who's in the house tonight, if we could just give her a round of applause. Former school board member and chairperson Miriam Bay, who I also see here. Thank you for joining us tonight. And can we have now a motion to accept the approval of minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Mr. Bledsoe. Any discussion? Any questions by board members? This is a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of December 10, 2019, and December 17, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And now I'd like to turn it over to our student rep, Bruno Callejo, for his student representative report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. So I just would like to start again by reminding all high school students about the FAFSA Challenge. The FAFSA is the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, which opened on October 1st and closes on June 30th, 2020. It is important, as many students know, to file your FAFSA. If you have not already done so, to improve your chances of qualifying for the most-grant scholarship and work-study aid. If students have not yet done so, it is crucial that if they are eligible to file your FAFSA immediately. On average, students who complete the FAFSA receive $4,000 in federal Pell Grants to pay for college. This challenge has been created by aspects of the city of Newark and is set to, by the year of 2025, to increase the number of students going to college. It is important to fill out this application since financial difficulty is a key factor that sadly prevents students from going to college. We want to make sure that students have every opportunity, and this is one of the ways to help with this issue. If any family and student is in need of assistance to fill out the FAFSA, if they have not already done so, the city of Newark has designated hub locations that can assist with any questions. There are at least two locations in every ward, and a full list of FAFSA events can also be found on the Newark City of Learning Collaborative website, which is nclc2025.org. In addition to the FAFSA, it is important for students who are applying to private colleges and universities to fill out to fill out the College Scholarship Service, or the CSS Profile. This is an online application that collects information used by almost 400 colleges, universities, professional schools, and scholarship programs to award financial aid from sources outside of the federal government. The deadline for the CSS Profile varies depending on a school's application deadline, so it is crucial to keep track of all of these dates. The FAFSA connects students to federal money, while this application goes beyond that, allowing colleges to access a family's finances and grant them large sums of scholarship funds based on demonstrated family need. Go to the College Board website for more information. My cabinet meeting will be on February 3rd, 2020, this coming Monday. In this meeting, school representatives will be given a chance to address the cabinet on issues that they see to be detrimental in their schools, and we will discuss issues that we might want to tackle in addition to those mentioned. One such issue that we will discuss, in working jointly with the NSU, is seeing if there is an active student council in each school, and in those that are not, getting them up and running. These are crucial for students to be involved in the decisions being made in their school. And it will be a necessary step in the creation of the Student Advisory Council, whose creation I will also be leading as the basis for next school year's student representative election. Aside from work that I will be conducting with my cabinet, there are a number of issues that I'm currently gathering more information about in relation to community service, security, and scheduling that I will speak more to in the future. With that, I would just like to say if anyone would like to communicate with me directly regarding any concerns, questions, or suggestions that they may have, that they can reach out to me at my district email, which is studentrep@nps.k12 nj.us. Thank you.
A motion, please, to accept the student representative's report?
Motion. Second.
I'm sorry, who is the motion? Ms. Gomez? Ms. Gomez and Ms. Hayes? Any discussion?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board, Superintendent, Community. First of all, Bruno, I'd just like to acknowledge you and your work of your office. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of the FAFSA Challenge Team, and the Newark community at NCLC, YMS, a number of community organizations have been critical in making sure that young people who are trying to get access to college know about the FAFSA form. So thank you to all those organizations, students, teachers, everyone who's been volunteering to make that possible. I'd also like to offer up the opportunity again for you to come visit one of our program and instruction committee meetings, particularly the work that you're doing in terms of gathering student input. We'd love to make sure that the work that we're doing is continuously having input from young people, so we welcome you to come sit in on one of our meetings and participate in a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Marie Thomas. Any other board members? Thank you. If we can have a motion to accept the student's representative report?
Yeah, we do have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And now we're going to move on to the Board President's report. Good evening, everyone. Fellow board members, Superintendent Leon, staff, students, families, and constituents. I am Josephine Garcia, President of the Newark Board of Education. Welcome to the first regular meeting of 2020. On Saturday, June 25th, 2020, board members, the superintendent, members of his senior staff, and some community members attended our Board Retreat, where the final topics outlined in the transition plan were covered, which included ethics, fiscal management best practices and fiscal obligations, budget, security, facilities, program and instruction, NPS Clarity 2020, board policy and procedures. While this marks the final session required under the transition plan, it is important that board members and senior staff continue to participate in all the required training, even after we have fully transitioned to local control. We cannot afford to stop now. We have made too much progress, and we do not need to go backwards. On February 12th, 2020, at Eastside High School, we will have our fifth parent engagement tour between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. We look forward to seeing community members and parents there. We need your assistance. We need help in getting your family members and friends to complete their lunch applications. The application needs to be completed even if a family member is not eligible for free or reduced lunch. Completion of the lunch application is important because it helps all district fund different programs that benefit all our students. I hope we can count on you to share the importance and encourage your family and friends to complete their lunch application. Tonight, the Board is going to take action on a resolution sponsored by Board Member Reginald Bledsoe to emphasize the importance of the 2020 Census. The census happens every 10 years, and it counts everyone in a household. Using the statistics in schools' CIS resources in your classroom during the 2019-2020 school year, it will support the efforts to make sure every child is counted in the 2020 Census. This count impacts the federal funds that communities receive for special education, classroom technology, teacher training, after-school programs, school lunch assistance, and more. We think it is extremely important because urban cities like ours are at risk of being undercounted. So we are asking everyone, staff, families, community, and you, who are in the viewing audience, to take the pledge to complete the census to shape the future of our community. For the next 43 days, we are getting the word out, making sure everyone is aware of the census. Hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funding is distributed to local communities, including school districts. So please take the pledge. As a reminder, the Newark Board of Education announces two new schools in the 2020-2021 school year. The School of Global Studies, a high school specializing in foreign languages. Students will learn Chinese or Arabic, or travel to China or the Middle East. The second new school is the Sir Isaac Newton Elementary School, a STEM immersive school from pre-K to first grade. Please apply online at www.nuarkenrolls.org. The application window closes in two and a half weeks on Friday, February 14th, and match letters will be released on April 12th. The next topic is the 2020 School Board Election. It is April 21st. This year, we have made it convenient for prospective candidates to get the petition package by visiting the district's website at www.nps.k12 nj.us, then click on the Board of Education tab, followed by the "Become a Board Member, April 2020", on the left side of the page. There you will find all the information you need. You can also get a package by visiting the Office of Board Relations located at 765 Broad Street. The deadline for submitting petitions is Monday, March 2nd, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. sharp. No petitions will be accepted after 4:00 p.m. On January 7th, 2020, a magnitude 6.4 earthquake hit the southwest region of Puerto Rico. Thousands were left homeless with the destruction, and the island went dark. After the earthquake, most of Puerto Rico's electricity has been restored, but uncertainty remains. A swarm of aftershocks have since followed, including a 5.9 on Saturday, January 11, 2020. Taínas Unidas, a nonprofit organization for the Puerto Rico earthquake survivors, is collaborating with many organizations, including our schools, to collect items that will personally be delivered to the island of Puerto Rico. If you would like to contribute, the drop-off location is Taínas Kitchen, located at 849 Mount Prospect Avenue, Newark, New Jersey, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Sundays, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. As the superintendent stated earlier, January is our annual School Board Recognition Month in New Jersey. And he stole my thunder, but I wanted to recognize my colleague, Reginald Bledsoe. We were at our NJSBA meeting on Wednesday, and he was elected as the Vice President of the SS County School Boards. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you there. And this concludes the President's report. Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is the Board Resolution 9.1, the Newark Board of Education Resolution on the 2020 Census.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe?
Second.
Second by Ms. Norton. I will read the resolution. Whereas the decennial census occurs every 10 years to enumerate every person residing in the United States, and is fundamental to ensuring that all residents of our great city have access to fair representation, essential services, and economic development. And whereas an accurate count of persons living in the city of Newark in the 2020 Census is vital to determine the representation of individuals, families, and communities in our local, state, and federal governments. And whereas the 2020 Census count of children residing and attending school under the Newark Board of Education will be the basis of federal education funding allocated to our schools over the next 10 years, specifically the federal programs serving our students living in poverty and students with disabilities. And whereas population data derived from the 2020 Census will be used by both government and businesses to determine which neighborhoods and communities in the city of Newark should receive services and investments like libraries, health clinics, and grocery and retail stores. And whereas the populations that are prevalent in urban areas like the city of Newark are at high risk of being undercounted, including young children, people of color, low-income households, language-minority families, foreign-born residents and households with limited internet access, according to the U.S. Census. And whereas children are more likely to be missed in the census count if they reside in the complex households that are also common in urban areas, such as multi-generation households, extended families, and multifamily households. And whereas for the 2020 Census, there is the potential for a heightened rise of undercounted residents due to the digital divide, language access issues, and local community mistrust in the federal government. And whereas local and state governments, as well as the community-based organizations, can play a critical role in counteracting the undercount risks reaching hard-to-count populations and ensuring their communities get counted in 2020. And whereas it is paramount for the school board, superintendent, principals, teachers, parent organizations, and all local leaders in the city of Newark to communicate the importance of census to families and community members to ensure everyone is counted. Therefore, be it resolved that the Newark Board of Education will develop and adopt a plan of action to aid in a complete count of all students and their families residing within the school district on the 2020 Census. And be it further resolved that the Newark Board of Education, through the Office of Teaching and Learning, will incorporate appropriate lessons and activities into the pre-K to 12 curriculum that focus on the importance of the census and is committed to working in partnership with other local civic, business, and community leaders, the state of New Jersey, and others to educate, engage, and count every resident in the city of Newark in the 2020 Census. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Board Member Bledsoe?
I just would like to thank not only my colleagues for their support for this resolution, but New Jersey School Boards Association, specifically the Urban Committees, and also the Council of Great City Schools. Oftentimes, we go to trainings with these associations, and they actually help us develop language for policies and resolutions, recommendations. So to the Board, working with these organizations is very key when trying to get initiatives off the ground and to support our community. But I also would like to commend the work that has already been taking place. This resolution just adds on top of the great work that's already been happening in the district, specifically through the Office of Title I and federal grants. Ms. Shavis, specifically the Parent Engagement Department, who's been actively doing training for parents and also staff around the 2020 Census. But I felt the need to put this forward because it adds a cherry on top of some of the great things that have been happening. And I would like to also see, particularly in the Program Instruction Committee, there possibly be discussion around statistics and other activities around the census. It's important considering the political climate that we're in. But again, to the district, to the superintendent, to the Chair, the New Jersey School Boards Association, and the Council of Great City Schools, thank you, and I look forward to your support on this resolution.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. List. And now we move on to the Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, and everyone in attendance. Happy New Year to everyone. This is a great time, but we begin this part of the presentation in sadness. One of our students from 13th Avenue was a little sick and had to be in the hospital for a little bit of time. And we thought he was going to be okay. So, you know, I know that there are boys and girls and ladies and gentlemen that are school-aged in the audience. And sometimes it's hard to understand when your friend is sick, and you want them to get better. And sometimes they get better, and sometimes they don't. So this is a moment of silence for Shamar Dorch, who went to a school up in the sky. Thank you. So we know that there has been conversation about these incredible environmental events that are occurring. Climate change is real? It's real. And it's impacting our people all around the world. So Madam President just mentioned the incredible work that's underway in Puerto Rico, but many of you may have heard that there was a 7.7 earthquake earlier this afternoon in between Jamaica and Cuba. And, you know, we worry about everybody because sometimes people don't worry about us. So, you know, however you do what you do in terms of service, even if it's just a little prayer, if you pray, if it's that you just believe that things happen, we need to make sure that there is good in our city so that our city helps lead this nation and that we help the nation lead the world. So my prayers to all that are suffering. So this is it. We've been in a transition plan since February 1, 2018. We are literally a few days. This next election is a very important one because the next three board members that are in fact elected make this an entire locally-elected board. While citizens have been voting for three candidates of their choosing, if so, this next election is important because all nine members of the Board will be elected, not under an advisory capacity, none of them. The transition comes to an end, and what does that mean? You know, I, as a, you know, we did not plan this meeting in the South Ward. When we schedule all of our meetings, we take into account where do we have the meetings, and we plan them in every single one of the wards. But we're in the South Ward, the gem of the city of Newark. And when I was the principal at University High School, and people, especially the mayor, when he heard me talking about how the South Ward is the gem of the city, he learned at that point in time that one of the reasons why I know it's the gem is because when my family came here from Cuba, here is where they were. And I was born on Clinton Avenue. You know, this part of the city brings out greatness. And so I just take this opportunity to thank everyone for attending and to let everyone know that what we are doing moving forward is only about greatness. NPS Clarity 2020 is a one-year strategic plan. It started in June, and it ends this June. And everyone who's in here who may have never read it, I ask you, go up on our web, Google "NPS Clarity 2020", because it's saying something about every little boy and girl, every lady and gentleman that is in our schools. There are 12 keys to 2020. And in the work that we will do, this is the type of school district that we will become, one that reflects, researches, and responds, one that reinvests in our children. We reinvigorate everyone, and we ask them to return back into our city so that our children become adults who then have children who become adults, and we begin to change the entire... entire idea of what school is like in Newark. School begins, as you heard earlier today, at age three in Newark, not on July 1. On July 1, every mommy who is carrying a precious baby in their tummy, a baby that is not yet born, we are worrying about every single one of them. And because we know that there was a daddy involved in that process, we will begin to provide assistance and support while the baby is in their womb. And when they are born, before the baby turns age three, we will be providing assistance and support along the way. There are game changers in this strategic plan that will accelerate the assistance and support so that our children will be able to demonstrate to everyone how great they are. You saw six incredible debaters. You saw a number of incredible tap dancers. We're doing it in every aspect of the work, in the academics, in the arts, in athletics, and in every single area that is required of us. We have a process called Newark Enrolls, and that is the procedure in which people apply to schools. I created an opportunity so that every school that is involved in Newark Enrolls will see how many students have selected them, number one. Of the thousands of students looking for high schools in Newark, of all of the choices that they have, and the process is still in place, that we still have a couple more weeks before it's done, the top choice of families in Newark are the magnet high schools, Arts High School, American History High School, Bard High School, Science Park High School, Technology High School, and University High School. In order to get into these incredible schools, there is an admissions test, and I'm going to give you all the information about when it is, where it is, so that you are aware of it. Then I started to say, what's the second preferred choices for families who are looking for high school seats? And guess what? I have to say that I wasn't surprised, but I must be honest to let you know, I was a little shocked. They're called comprehensive high schools in the city of Newark, and I think I know why. Here's what's happening at Barrenger. We'll have a Law and Public Safety Academy. The partners are University High School, Rutgers Law School, and McCarter in English. At Central High School, we'll have an Environmental Studies Academy. The partners, Science Park, Kane University, and PSEG. At Eastside High School, the Teacher Academy, University High School as the magnet, Montclair State University Higher Education Partner, and the American Federation of Teachers as the professional organization. At Malcolm X Shabazz High School is the Engineering Academy. Technology High School is the Magnet High School, NJIT is the Higher Education Partner, and Stryker is the professional organization. At Week Wake High School, the magnet is Science Park, Rutgers School of Nursing is the Higher Education Partner, and RWJ Barnabas Health is the professional organization. And leading up all of the high schools at the comprehensive level, Westside High School will have its Business and Finance Academy with American History High School as the magnet, the Higher Education is Rutgers School of Business, and the professional organization is Googled. Here's what I want everyone to understand. The strategy is, in order to improve our comprehensive high schools, we need three partners at every school, a magnet high school at every comprehensive high school, a higher education partner who is an expert in the topic, and then a professional organization who will assist us in the work. That is what we're doing at every single one of the comprehensive high schools. In the next couple of months, the board will be voting on curriculum that all of these schools are writing, and this curriculum for all of the children who decide to go to these schools. And every professional organization will provide internship opportunities for any student who decides to go to any of these high schools while they're in high school. The colleges are designed to give our high school students college opportunities, college credits, while they're in high school. We know that our students can excel. We know that they can, and we will demonstrate that they can to everyone. That is our strategy at the comprehensive high schools, and it is appearing to work well. Newark Vocational High School is our culinary arts academy. Our partner is the county, Payne Tech. Our higher education partner is Hudson County, and the professional organization is the Food Network. We obviously have a specialized high school for young men. Eagle Academy begins in grade six and ends in grade 12. We opened up two new schools this year. We opened up East Ward Elementary School and Newark Vocational High School. Next year, starting this September, we're opening up two more new schools. Sir Isaac Newton Elementary School for students in pre-K, K, and 1, and then every year we will grow a grade. One of the learnings that we have made in partnership with our charter schools is, in fact, that they grow a school. They don't just start a school kindergarten to eighth grade, they grow it. We will do the same. We will start pre-K, K, and 1, and we will grow Sir Isaac Newton Elementary School, and the students who enroll in this school will automatically have a seat at Science Park High School when they graduate from eighth grade. Newark School of Global Studies is a new high school. We are teaching two world languages at the school every year for four years. It will be Arabic, and it'll be Chinese. All of the ninth graders will choose by May which of those two languages they will study. We will require every ninth grader, every eighth grader, to report to high school in May before they're supposed to start. And then during the summer, we need them at the high school for two weeks to prepare. Everyone else who's in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade next year, if you enroll in our summer school program, it doesn't matter what elementary school you go to right now. If you enroll in our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade program, meaning you're going to be a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader this coming September, we have a program for you. I want you, in about two months, I will announce what are all of the summer programs. If you are a dancer, like these tap dancers, Alvin Ailey will be in Newark. If you're a student leader, we're going to be going to upstate New York so that you can learn some of the student learning, leadership, learning opportunities that I did at Frost Valley when I was in elementary school. We will provide every single child who lives in Newark, I want everyone to be clear about that, every child who lives in Newark, this school district is always worrying about you. So the Newark Enrolls process is a one-application for any of these schools. The application is all on the computer. Somebody said, oh, you know, the superintendent, he's having everyone fill out paper. If you need paper and you fill it out, you can fill it out on paper and go to any one of our schools in Newark, and they will help you put it up on the computer. If you don't trust anybody and you want to come to me, I have to figure out how to do it, but I'll do it with you. Ultimately, this whole application is done online. It opens on December 7, and it closes on February 14. If you are going to high school, it doesn't matter what high school you're attending, you must take an admissions test. You want to go to Central High School, you just can't get into Central High School. That's how they used to do it. Now, you want to go to Central High School, you don't have to live across the street from Central High School to go to Central High School. Any high school that's one of our comprehensives or Newark Vocational Eagle, you just apply. You make it your first choice, and you're going to get it. Part of our issue is to make sure we have enough seats, so that's why you have up to eight choices to make. On February 21, we're giving the admissions test to all eighth graders who attend a school that's known as Newark's Public Schools. So one of the schools that we currently govern over, that is where we will administer the test, it's a Friday, and it'll be done during the school morning. On February 22, if you're an eighth grader and you live in Newark, but you don't necessarily attend a Newark school, a Newark public school, then at 8:30 a.m., Science Park High School, it's a Saturday morning, Saturday, February 22, we will administer the test to all of the students. All they're going to need to do is come with, what, two number-two pencils? Are they going to need a calculator? So a calculator, two number-two pencils, and they're good. On April 12, we are expecting to send out the match letters so that everyone will know where their children, in terms of the choice options, have in fact been provided for them. My objective is to make sure that whatever is your first choice of the schools that are offered, that you get that. If we can make that happen, we will make that happen. My objective is to make sure that after this process, if there's a seat available in the school that you want your child to attend, we will make sure that your child goes to that school. We only control the schools that are in the enrollment process, so we applaud those schools for joining us in this effort, and we look forward to the work ahead. Teachers, there's a transfer window that we have provided from April 20 to May 1. Any of the schools that you heard, we are going to begin every year opening up two schools. We've done, we opened up two schools last year. This year, we're going to open up two schools next year. I already have the name of the new school for September 2021 to provide our students with choices that are going to provide the students the realization of all of their dreams. If you're a teaching staff member and you do not think that your skills are being serviced at the schools where you're currently at, April 20 to May 1, those are the opportunities that we're going to be providing teachers so that they can actually be assigned, starting next school year, to the school that will help us meet the expectations of our students. We've been working hard, just this year alone, in grants, $21,258,275. This district, to date, has in fact earned. And I have my executive director of Title I Programs and Grants, federal grants and programs, Ms. Janet Chavis, please stand. She deserves a big round of applause. We're providing counseling to children because mental health is real. We're providing mental health opportunities so that our adults will know how to help our students. We want healthy adults. We want healthy children so that they become healthy adults. And we have over $21 million that we are in fact receiving, that are going directly into the hands of our teachers and our professionals to provide the assistance and support. A couple of footnotes. We're in the process of preparing budgets for next year. Community meetings at every single one of the elementary schools and high schools will in fact begin during the second week of February. So if you have a child in any of our schools and you want to know, you can ask the principal, hey, when are we going to have our community meeting? Your principals will obviously be sharing that. We will know the answer to that question when we begin the process of reviewing budgets, and we will also post those dates on the web. We have created a principal pipeline with the Wallace Foundation, millions of dollars, not accounted for in the $21 million, to create a pipeline in building stronger leaders to become principals of our schools. This will feed into the School Leadership Council that will in fact exist in every single one of our schools as well. College Fair. We had two college fairs for our students. The historically black colleges and universities were hosted here in the city of Newark, and in one day, we had students with almost $2 million in college scholarships. Yep, young men and young ladies from the city of Newark being offered college scholarships to the historically black colleges and universities of this great country. It's okay. Just know that anyone who's afraid of the greatness of Newark will understand how great Newark in fact will be. One of the ways that we become great is by changing some of the things that we do, things that people in this audience may even think doesn't in fact make sense. There are seven policies that are under review, and last night was the last day of the reviews, graduation requirements, discipline policy, grading policy, school uniform policy, attendance policy, discipline policy. Every single one of the essential policies that we have, this board will be receiving information during the course of the next couple of months to actually vote for adoptions and approvals, and there are a host of people in the audience that are assisting and responsible in fact for that. Summer School. Summer School 2020 is only a couple of months away. We will make sure that all of the opportunities for all of the students who live in Newark are in fact afforded to them, and so I'm looking forward to that. If your baby's going to kindergarten, we have a kindergarten K-ready boot camp for all five-year-olds. We will have, in a piloted form, five-year-olds that are going to enter kindergarten being required to go to summer school to a boot camp so that they can start ready. We will provide this opportunity to every child in the years thereafter. Summer Bridge Program for every student entering high school. This is not something new in Newark, it's just something that we know will in fact assist and move us forward. An AP Institute for all of the teachers who offer advanced placement courses, and we're extremely excited about that. Attendance becomes really important, so we need to make sure that all of our students are here to school and to school on time. The FAFSA Challenge, we need to make sure that you fill out the financial aid forms if you're in fact a senior, and obviously, the lunch applications need to be completed so that we can actually get the secured dollars that come with the completion of our lunch applications. And Madam President, before I end the superintendent's report, I see a number of people who are already ready for the next part of the meeting. Please let's stand and join in recognizing Ms. Anzella Nelms for her incredible service Mrs. Nelms, as a distinguished educator in our city and in this school district, your vision, your passion, and everything that you have done during this transition period is something that we honor and recognize. We thank you for what you have done. We praise you for what you have done, and we look forward to you continuing to help us because your job here is not over at all. Thank you so much. Madam President, that ends the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Leon. Board Member Anderson, it's regarding the superintendent report.
Yes. I just have one quick question.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, the schools who have, the schools who will be recipients of the social-emotional grant, have they been identified? Which schools will they be?
Thank you. A great question. So, there are two grants, one over $5 million. That's to provide assistance and support to the adults so that they can recognize signs of the students. The second grant is to provide clinical assistance to the children directly. So it's two different grants, and what we want to merge both. So what we're doing is we have a group of schools that have the $5 million, and then another group of schools that have the $2 million, and we'll make sure that through board relations that all of the board members are aware of what are all of the schools that are involved in that process. I want to thank you for asking that question, because I forgot something very, very important. The Heart of America was here in Newark. It's an educational space makeover program, and they visited three of our elementary schools. They visited Cleveland, Lincoln, and Dr. Horton, and this afternoon, they determined which school will get a whole makeover in a STEM room there, and I have been given permission to announce that now, and that school is Dr. William H. Horton Elementary School.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Leon. And now we will move over to Board Member Marie Thomas, it's regarding the superintendent report.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Marie Thomas, and then Board Member Bledsoe.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Superintendent, for your leadership and your vision, and just the incredible work of you and your team for making sure that a lot of the dreams that we've had for our young people here in the district are actually being realized through the strategic plan and through the work that's being done now. So thank you for that. As far as the policy review sessions, I just wanted to remind folks in the community, if you were not able to attend, there have been three different sessions over the past three months, but if you haven't been to attend, of course, the door is always open to provide your feedback on what you want the policies to look like, but I did want to just acknowledge so many of the students, district folks, community members, parents, who've been showing up every month or whenever they can, just to offer their feedback, just to make sure that our policies reflect the interests of our community. Lastly, Superintendent, this is a reminder of a conversation we've already had as it relates to the transfer fair, which we know is an incredible opportunity for our teachers to be able to transfer to a setting that's more suitable or of their desires, but just to stress that we make sure that process is equitable, ensuring that our highest-performing teachers are also preserved in our highest-need schools. We don't want to lose floods of high-quality teachers in our schools that need them most. And so, I know you've already expressed your priority to make sure that we do have equity in terms of the teachers that are represented in some of our schools that need the most support, and I'm looking forward to seeing how that rolls out.
So, thank you so much for that, and I appreciate you with that comment, because that's a very important aspect of the work. I would be remiss if I didn't share that the reason why the one-year plan is important is because in June, we're actually going to issue a 10-year plan, and everyone who has a child in Newark should be aware of what that plan actually is. I would recommend, anyone who's watching or in the audience, NPS Clarity 2020 is the document that I would ask you to read. It will be a quick read. However, the 10-year strategic plan will be launched in June. It'll become effective July 1.
Board Member Bledsoe.
Thank you, Madam President. Superintendent, I just
Uh Superintendent, I just have a a quick question uh in reference to the 21 million dollar grant. Um, since we're going into budget season, um those funds are being supplemented in the current budget or the budget for next year?
The question was like where, when is funding starting? So that's a great question. Uh, each of the 21 million dollars, we know we received it during the course of this year, but uh some of it gets phased in uh over a certain amount of time. So it's not like we have 21 million dollars to spend right now. Uh, some of them are four years, some of them are three years. Uh, we'll make sure that as it relates to each of those, there's a chart that uh Ms. Chavis did for me that is very detailed. We'll make sure that everyone has that.
So in a period of four years, it's going to be in each budget?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, secondly, um the uh admissions exams uh for the comprehensive high schools, uh I think that is a extraordinary uh idea. Um, I asked the question, um how is that uh the out, the scores of those exams? Uh, how are we using that data? And will that data be used to determine where a student is entering high school?
So the admissions criteria is extremely important. Each school has a different admissions criteria. So just using Arts High School, for example, you may score very well on the test, but if you want to be a dancer and you can't do what these young students did today, um you're not tap dancing there, do you know what I'm saying? So you, at Arts High School, you have to take the test, but you have to do an audition. Uh, at each of the schools, every school, this is the difference. Every high school will have their own admissions criteria. And we will review and monitor that obviously for a number of reasons. We want to make sure that we're monitoring who's getting into what schools and making sure that they're meeting all of the criterias.
Data will specifically be used for academic purposes to determine where a student is.
Yeah, there'll, there'll a number of other things. Where to be placed in classes, some schools do multiple testing after they get admitted to determine class opportunities, things of that nature. We want to address all of that uh during the testing window.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Board Member Bledsoe. Ms. List, now we're moving on to public participation.
Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern and not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with the board members or district officials. The board president, superintendent or designee may respond to questions either at the end of the session or at a later time. It shall be the responsibility of the board president to maintain order and efficient process during the public participation portion of board meetings, especially so that the full-time allotment for public comment is given over to speakers from the public. Public participation at a board public meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. These time, this time allotment may be extended for an additional 15 minutes by the board president at her discretion. All speakers, regardless of whether he or she represents an organization, will be allotted no more than three minutes for comment unless an exception applies. Time limits for all speakers will be adhered to. There will be no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. All speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. Examples of unacceptable behavior that will not be permitted include, but are not limited to naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, racial slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meeting or inciting others to do so. The superintendent or board president may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming and that the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board president or district officials, repetitive or truculent speech or other disregard for the rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the board meeting will be adjourned.
Thank you very much, Ms. List, and the first speaker is Malcolm White Walker. Good evening, Mr. White Walker.
Good evening.
Master.
What I want to speak about today is uh my school. We, like the children have been having to clean up. Well, we do clean up after ourselves, but they're, they're having to clean up and the custodians are not cleaning up. The teachers are treating us like we are slaves and we're not supposed to be slaves because we're supposed to be free, right? And they're treating us like slaves because we, we clean up after other people and those people need to clean up for themselves. So what I also want to talk about, the food is not good in my school. The food tastes undone. So sometimes the, the chicken is pink, very much pink. And I don't like my chicken like that. And then on the other side, they have me cleaning up stuff that I didn't even do. So can y'all please fix that?
Absolutely. What school do you attend?
I, I attend Belmont Runyon.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Denise Cole.
Denise Cole, Tuukia Avenue, North New Jersey. Good evening, I am here to submit into legal record and re- recorded into the legal minutes of this meeting along with testimony I give on, gave on January 8th, 2018 at the State Board of Education meeting. Um, Josephine Garcia, Board Chair and the um contracted legal chief counsel. We, the community, want you to know why you all are being deceitful and you are violating our right as per 18A 17 dash 24 point 1. We are demanding the immediate disclosure to this community if this is a, if this board is attempting to change this district into a shared district or a unified district. And we demand the immediate release of all details and if any unions were apprised of the secret process without informing the community. We demand the immediate discussion and presentation of the study and when the community will be given the opportunity for community input. According to the aforementioned policy, the report shall set forth a plan explaining how the shared arrangements will operate. How shall, how and shall also address such items as community support for the agreement, effect on services to the representative district, division of the superintendent or business administrator's time between the districts, availability of administrative backup, likelihood of situations creating conflict of interest, financial advantage of the arrangements. We demand the race, we demand that racism in this district is addressed and the trainings to be reported on by the superintendent and his reports covering all ethnicities, groups in this district. We also demand to know what the discretionary funds of the superintendent is, what they are being used for. We demand that the board chair announce the upcoming retreats, special meetings, dates, time and location, and that they are open to the public. I also wanted to submit into record and supported a superintendent's letter, the Michigan um article that says Michigan gambled on charter schools. It's, and it lost its children. Also in support is why the racist history of the charter school movement is never discussed. Also put into record, the, the mayor's explanation of why the superintendent submitted the letter um asking for charter school closings. But I don't think his letter went further, far enough. The superintendent submitted a letter, but I'm asking the board chair for this board to submit a letter or in support of you. Because if the community has to come out and support you, if this board don't even support you and they hired you, there's a problem. So we're asking that you, Chair, Madam Chair, submit a letter also in support of the superintendent's recommendation to the um commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Next speaker, Christopher Kanek.
My name is Chris Kanek. I reside at 155 Berkeley Avenue in Bloomfield, New Jersey. Uh, I wanted to bring it to uh the board's attention that some of my honor students' uh parents have taken to paying out of pocket for systems that are available for free in our online math curricular materials that they still do not have access to. Uh, that is not at my behest. It is something they did their own research on and decided to make that decision for themselves. But it is fantastically disappointing that they should have to foot that burden when, as far as I'm aware, the district's already paying to have those materials made available to them. Uh, we need to get student accounts in student hands as soon as possible for the online math curriculum. It self-modifies, it provides materials on a per-child basis that are modified per child. That is exactly what we need in struggling schools like Central High School. I have students who come in functioning at a third grade math level into the same class that students who are functioning beyond grade level will also sit in. Uh, recently, the district came to Central High School to do a district walkthrough. Uh, they came into my classroom and I do have to admit at the time, I thought to myself, you must have been truly desperate to have come to me in this time. Uh, because you, uh, I don't know about any of the board members currently here, but uh the district as a whole came into my most out-of-compliance classroom. Classroom that started with 33 students at the start of the year and had a proportion of special needs students well above the district average, including students who are not meant to function in the regular learning environment. When we talk about least restrictive environment, that is a very serious term. It means that students are supposed to be placed in an environment where they can learn effectively and efficiently with the least restrictions placed on their time spent in the normal general ed classroom. I'm not sure about other schools, but at Central High School, the vast majority of our special needs students appear to be in the general ed classroom at all times throughout the day, even when their IEP specifies that they should not be. That's something that needs to be reviewed very carefully because it is a violation of their IEPs. I have started receiving phone calls from parents asking why children's personal aides are not present in my classroom. I've received phone calls about why there is no co-teacher in my classroom because certain children have co-teachers all day long and then they get to math and they want to know what's the deal. Uh, additionally, restorative practices require a lot of face time and in turn require a lot more funding. At Central High School, we have one person in charge of restorative practices and he is stuck in meetings all day long because that is what restorative practices require, which means he can't implement all other aspects of the discipline policy and expand from there. We need to do better.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kanek. Next speaker, Yvette Jordan.
Evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Jordan. I'm a history teacher at Central High School. My address is 47 Wilbur Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. I just want to mention about the importance of something going on next week and that is Black Lives Matters in schools. I had mentioned it last week at your meeting and I'm mentioning it again. I haven't heard anything from central office unfortunately. Um, so I've mentioned it um throughout my school and to other um social studies teachers that I know. I just feel it's imperative for our students, since most of our students are of color, for them understanding what it is about. There are four themes this year and have, have been in previous years. So my hope is that um I see something till before um February 3rd. Black Lives Matters at school is from February 3rd until February 7th and their focus is ending zero tolerance, mandating black history in classrooms, hiring more African-American teachers and funding counselors, not cops. Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Next speaker, Kevin Sinak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Sinak. I live at 66 Independence Drive, Arizona, New Jersey. I'm also a teacher over at Eastside High School and I love my job. I really uh have enjoyed it. Um, lucky enough to have been there since I started and I think it's great. Um, and reason why I think it's great is because I feel like there's a tremendous sense of community at that school. And it's not just at that school, but it's really my memories of Newark education is with a tremendous sense of community. When I was at science, I felt that community because it was still that old abandoned or formerly abandoned from your factory and it was just a really beautiful place to be. And my point is that I feel like as a community, you know, we love each other, we care for each other, we want the best, specifically when it comes to things like the water. Um, I spoke about this before in September and I'm really here just to repeat what I had said then, which is simply, I would like similar data to what was released in 2017 and 16. I thought that the data released then was beautiful. It was very clear and precise as far as what were the results for every fountain, every faucet in every school. And I'm not saying that there aren't things being done to fix the problem. I have seen the roads being dug up, I've seen the pavement being repaved. I, I, again, I think it's awesome. I would just like a little bit more transparency as far as the testing. I last heard that there was some type of rotational testing schedule. Again, I haven't heard any more specifics as far as the results about the water. I could be mistaken, but that is really uh all I'm looking for. And um at the risk of being redundant, I'd like to just uh read bits of an article that the woman who was just speaking uh wa- wrote not too long ago. Any level of lead exposure is unsafe. City and state officials claim they're doing all that can be done to address Newark's lead crisis, but some data says otherwise. Use or maintenance installation of filters by residents may be causing this problem. It's imperative that more aggressive education and action be taken by the city, including door-to-door education, ongoing assistance to test for lead, to help people use and maintain filters. You can also request city visit your house to check on the proper use and installation of your filters. But until that happens, you're on your own. Water is life. Let's help each other stay safe, keep our children protected from lead contaminated drinking water by correctly using and maintaining filters. Clearly, that was a reference to people living in their homes and I think it's good advice that would also be well applied in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sinak. Next speaker, Lyndon Brown.
Good evening, Lyndon Brown, 220 South Sixth Street in Newark. Uh, first, I want to say on behalf of the Secondary Parent Council that we are in support of Superintendent Leon's position uh to close, have four low-performing charter schools closed in uh the city of Newark and to end the lease of people's prep uh in, at, in Camden Street campus. I think it's very important that Bard be able to grow uh there at that Camden uh street location. In addition, we recommend that Eagle Academy be given their own building so they can expand. Weekway needs full access of its school building, especially the science labs and, and the Eagle Academy needs their own space. And I know we want to uh discuss uh possibly reopening some of our closed schools, but I would like to see Eagle Academy in their own building, being able to uh host their own programs, assemblies, utilize their own gymnasium, have their own showcase with their trophies and things like that. So I would like to make that recommendation on behalf of the Secondary Parent Council. Um, I want to uh also say that transition coordinators are needed for our special needs students who have a, a need to have structured goals for their life after high school. And these transition coordinators are needed at, and particularly at Central High School and American History High School. So I hope when our principals are, are creating budgets for next year, that those positions are included and that oversight is being given in that process. Um, I wanted to commend the district on the AP curriculum that was mentioned, the AP Institute. I think this district is moving in a great direction. I attended the I attended the National College World Conference in Birmingham, Alabama, and that was one of the initiatives that was being promoted nationally. So to see Newark Public Schools headed in that direction is truly great. We need professional development for our coaches and athletic directors on the NCAA Clearinghouse Rules and college admissions for athletes. Far too many gifted athletes in our district are missing viable opportunities because many of our coaches and athletic directors are not knowledgeable of the college admissions process for athletes. Perhaps we can get some college athletic directors to come down and do some professional development with our athletic directors in the district. I've had quite a few of them come to me for information and books, but I think they need more intricate training. I want to commend the district for, at the moment of silence, for Shamar Deutsch from 30th Avenue School. I also want to acknowledge the passing of Mr. Kevin Brown, the retired vice principal of Barringer High School, who was a phenomenal administrator, who passed away on January 8th. Mr. Charles Lindsay, our Westside High School PTA president, who passed away on yesterday. Keon Lawrence, a phenomenal athlete from Weekway High School, who passed away in December. We want to acknowledge these people also and offer our condolences to their family. I know many of our young people in the city look to Kobe Bryant as a role model, and we are praying for his family and the other victims of that helicopter crash as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next speaker, Wilamina Holder.
Not appearing.
Not appearing. Next speaker, Lucius Jones.
Not appearing.
Not appearing. Next speaker, Africa Iveyang.
Not appearing.
Next speaker, Antoinette Baskerville Richardson.
Now, I know I have to keep within my three minutes. Anthony Baskerville Richardson, 236 Vassar Avenue in Newark. Good evening, Board President Garcia, Vice President Haynes, Board Member Superintendent Leon, Newark Community and Newark Board of Education staff. I have an extensive history here in education in the city of Newark, including my present position as Chief Education Officer for Mayor Baraka. So it is obligatory that I explain upfront that I am not speaking tonight in any official capacity. I am speaking as a resident with an extensive history in the city of Newark. And I just want to ask, because I am a former English teacher, if we all just kind of put on our higher-level thinking caps for a minute? And I think our higher-level thinking caps are just our common sense. So here in New Jersey, where we live, no superintendent can close charter schools. That's a fact. The Commissioner of Education makes decisions about opening and closing charter schools. That's another fact. The superintendent's job is to report on the performance of Newark schools and supply data-driven evaluations. And the superintendent of Newark schools should have his eyes on every institution, I'm sorry, every educational institution in our city. The issue of closing schools is very emotional. We all know that. But two of the charter schools in question are on probation for poor academic performance and safety issues. Another has over-enrolled and is utilizing space designed for and needed by Bard High School Early College. The Commissioner of Education will have the final say on these issues. So I don't believe in closing schools as a long-term strategic solution, and I don't believe that our city administration or our superintendent do either. I do, however, believe that Superintendent Leon's concerns and recommendations are sound, and he is within his rights and obligations as superintendent to rebuild the Newark Board of Education District, correct inequities, and hold all Newark schools to the same high standards. The nine members, and I don't want to speak of you as if you're not here, you, the nine members of the Newark Board of Education unanimously voted for Superintendent Leon. Members of the Newark community have rallied behind him and have worked diligently on developing Superintendent Leon's 10-year strategic plan. Newark Board of Education, this institution is the backbone of education in the city of Newark. It is the backbone for preschool through 12th grade and is moving more students into college. Concerned students and parents should appeal to the New Jersey State Commissioner of Education. Be clear on who is responsible. I have a lot more to say, but I must respect the three minutes, so I will simply end by saying, we have been through turbulent times, we have been through school closings, we know what it's about, but we will also clear on who is responsible. We cannot allow untruths printed on glossy, expensive paper to blur our vision. It is time to unite around a common, data-driven vision and plan that will benefit every child in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, former Chairperson Richardson. Next speaker, Deborah Smith Gregory. It's Deborah. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Leon. My name is Deborah Smith Gregory. I reside at 697 South 12th Street in Newark. And I currently serve as the president of the Newark NAACP and the chairperson for the Alliance for Newark Public Schools. The Newark NAACP and the Alliance for Newark Public Schools support Newark Superintendent Roger Leon, who has requested closure of four low-performing charter schools and a halt to the expansion of charters in Newark based on the tremendous strain on the Newark District budget and the failure to serve a cross-section of Newark's school-aged children. He has made bold decisions to advocate for closure of these schools, and it was one of the demands that thousands of students, parents, and community members demanded during the movement to get public schools returned back to local control. During that time, the charter organizations were given leeway by state commissioners via the state superintendent to expand without responsible regard to the existing educational structure of the district. The NAACP on Quality Education published in July 2017 a report entitled "Quality Education for All, One School at a Time." The task force held seven meetings across the country. The hearings ensured that testimony came from everyone: educators, administrators, school policy experts, charter school leaders, parents, advocates, community leaders, and students to gain the insight. And among their recommendations included developing and enforcing a robust charter school accountability measure by creating and enforcing a rigorous accountability system. According to educator Bruce Baker, who has been following the expansion of charter schools, a disturbing pattern has been revealed, not just in Newark but around the country. Charter schools are becoming parasitic to its host, the district schools. With the expansion of charter schools, they operate primarily in competition, not cooperation, with their host to serve a finite set of students and draw from a finite pool of resources. Now, the charter school advocates and leaders are crying foul because the situation is reversed. I maintain their cries are a song of parasitic hypocrisy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith Gregory. Next speaker, Terrence Vincent. Not appearing. Next speaker, Douglas Bateman. Not appearing. Next speaker, Amanda Negron. Not appearing. Next speaker, former chairperson and board member, Miriam Bay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miriam Bay, and I reside at 30 Underwood Street here in Newark. And first, I want to say to Superintendent Leon, thank you very much for visiting Delaney Hall. The residents there definitely enjoyed your participation and information that you gave to them while you were there. This is your second time coming, so I appreciate that. And I have two issues that I'm concerned with. The first one is the Amistad law that has been in place since 2002. And I wanted to know, can I answer it now? You could, you know, answer it later, of course. But I wanted to know what is going on with that curriculum? And the next one is what is being done in the Newark Public Schools regarding the sex trafficking that's taking place in our neighborhoods? I asked that same question at the Newark Municipal Council meeting a couple of weeks ago because this is an issue that's very important to us, the safety of our children and our women, and our men and boys, of course, but specifically, what type of plans do we have in place? And regarding the Amistad law, I wanted to know, is there a curriculum that has, that you have in place? And if you do, do you have books that we could look at to see the type of history that is in those curriculums? Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Bay. Next speaker, Yolanda Johnson. Not appearing. Next speaker, Chanel Dunn. Not appearing. Next speaker, Jessica Reyes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jessica Reyes. My address is 321 Bergen Street in North New Jersey. I have a 17-year-old son that attends People's Prep. When we moved here a year ago, I chose People's Prep after a lot of research. Darius is on the spectrum, and adjusting to a new school and a new city, what that indeed is a challenge. But People's Prep has made such a smooth transition, and I must say, it was, it has been one of the best decisions I've ever made. At People's Prep, Darius has grown so much in the last year. His confidence has skyrocketed, and he's gained so much independence. People's Prep's support system is incredible. Darius' council coach works closely with him and communicates with me on the daily on his progress. One of the things I love most about People's Prep is the whole council coach program. My son is assigned to one person for the whole time he's in the school to lead him and guide him, and they build a relationship where my son feels safe to go and talk to, no matter what it may be. The teachers are always open, willing, and able to provide Darius with the help he needs. The teachers, I'm sorry, to succeed. Darius attends a great after-school program at Rutgers University, which People's Prep has tied them to, which will open several doors for him in the future. People's Prep is my son's future. The positive impact People's Prep has had in my son's life is something I am so thankful for. When reading Mr. Roger Leon's letter, which was written during the holiday break, he states, "There's nothing distinctive or innovative about People's Prep educational program, nor does it serve any underserved population." Do you all agree with this? I disagree wholeheartedly. People's Prep is clearly distinctive and innovative, and it most certainly serves the underserved population, including my son. And for someone on the spectrum, it is so important to have the type of stability provided by the teachers and the councils at People's Prep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Next speaker, Ya Yegmeng. Asimang, okay. Asimang, right in the back.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ya Ajima. I live at 55 South 10th Street. My son is ninth grade at People's Prep. My son came home crying that they're going to close People's Prep, and he told me that, mommy, if they close People's Prep, I don't think I'm going to any other school. Please, I don't want you to close People's Prep because my son has, People's Prep has helped him very much. Now he's independent, the teachers and their coach. Homework, they help him. Now everything my son do, People's Prep helps him. I don't want you to close People's Prep, please, because if you close it, I don't know if my son is going to any other school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, John Kennedy. Not appearing. Next speaker, Donna Jackson. Not appearing. Next speaker, Beverly Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here just to talk about...
Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Beverly Kennedy. I live at 106 Lyons Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. I'm here to talk about grief counseling. It was said over on the South Ward that there was a possibility that the board was going to go to Chicago to get grief counseling for the kids. I'm not here to disagree with grief counseling. I do believe that there are people in the city of Newark that will provide grief counseling and loss. Our kids lose a great deal. When you talk about grief, I'm going to go to loss first. Do you know when kids are in foster care, there's a loss? Do you know when kids' parents are incarcerated? That's a loss. So when they come to school and you want them to be academic on site and be focused, they're thinking about what they lost. So then we come into grief, and Echoes Grief Center, I work there. It is sponsored by Cotton Funeral Home, and it's free. We work with families, we work with children, we'll come into your school. I'm not saying that we can do it all. All I'm saying is, put a call out and find out who in the city of Newark does grief counseling here before you go out, before you spend money, because there's people here want to serve your children. And I know I only have a certain amount of time, but I'm going to break it down to you this way. I'm from, school within the school, before you had university high, school within the school was here first. Before you had science high, the teachers from university high started science high. So I need you to understand, we are here to serve the people. I'm educated and qualified, and I will serve your kids for free. So I just need you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Roberto Cabañas.
Good evening, Roberto Cabañas, 177 Avenue. Charter schools in Newark are publicly funded, unaccountable, undemocratic institutions that lack transparency and drain our district of needed resources. They push a false narrative that their schools outperform our traditional public schools and successfully disenfranchise our neighborhoods. It is important to understand that the failures of charter schools aren't unique to Newark either. Parents and students in Detroit, New Orleans, Chicago, New York City, DC, Baltimore, and many other Black and Brown communities across the country are organizing to completely remove charter schools from their communities for not delivering on the promise they have for education for every child. And I know, I've been to all these cities and I've talked to parents and students about these very issues. Sadly, closing schools in Newark... Sadly, closing schools in Newark is nothing new to us. In fact, there have already been many charter schools that have been shut down due to corruption, mismanagement of resources, and low-performing results. Why should we continue to invest resources in a failing system? In 2012, let's not forget, Kami Anderson, Cory Booker, and Chris Christie conspired to close a dozen of our public schools as part of their agenda to make Newark the charter capital of our country. That didn't happen. This is what ignited our grassroots movement for local control, largely led by students in the Newark Students Union, members of Communities United, the Newark NAACP, the Newark Teachers Union, Newark parents, and member organizations of the Alliance for Newark Public Schools. Let's not forget that charter schools were dead silent the entire time while we had our movement for local control, because they feared the day that they would be held accountable by a community, and that day has finally arrived. Superintendent Lyon is closing low-performing schools and taking back the schools that were taken from us. A bold move, but a necessary one to restore confidence in our community. Community beware. Charter schools and their big-money investors are currently investing a lot of money to form little nonprofit organizations here in Newark disguised as institutions advocating for equity and parental choice. And I might add, their staff are pretty nice. But we know who they're doing their bidding for. And it's important to remember what our ultimate goal is, and that's providing quality education for every child in the city. Lastly, I'll say, as a community member, as a field director for Communities United, and as a member of the Alliance for Newark Public Schools, we condemn the recent actions taken by these charter networks to distribute false propaganda in our neighborhoods. And we thank you, Superintendent Lyon, for doing the right thing by requesting the closure of these four low-performing charter schools that continue to drain-
Mr. Cabañas.
...our public resources from the district.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, S. Johnson. S. Johnson. Board relations, if the next meeting, we can make sure that the person puts their first full name, not initial. Next speaker, Douglas Freeman.
Good evening. Douglas Freeman, 523 Clinton Place. I was gonna talk about-
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I just did. Douglas Freeman, 523 Clinton Place.
Thank you.
I'm here as a resident today. I'm here to, was here to talk about Newark vocational school, but I understand there's gonna be a meeting on the 30th with the parents and the staff, so I'm not here to talk about that. 1784, it's my understanding that Chancellor Avenue School was the first school built in Newark. 1854, we had seven schools, boys five to eighteen, seven schools for girls, seven schools for girls and boys, and one colored children's school. One of the things when we look at the South Ward, it's more than just the schools that were closed. Our homeowners have their houses stolen from them by Wells Fargo, Bank of America. Also, we had homes taken from them from the state of New Jersey on our avenue in Dewey Street, where we was promised a new high school, which we haven't received yet. It was turned into a garden. But those homeowners have lost value of their homes, because the value of their homes now have increased within the South Ward because of the path train extension and all the different things that's coming here. And they're not actually receiving that revenue from the long, hard years of work that the seniors have put into their households. So one thing I will add on to the speaker that was here previously. William Brown Jr. Academy, 5.1 million. Maple Avenue School, appraised at 3.9 million, sold for 1.2. Bannacur School, which is now gonna be a car lot, appraised for 1.7, sold for $325,000. Clayton Avenue School, which is now controversy with the feds and some other folks, appraised at 2.5 million, sold for 1 million, and flipped for another amount that I don't have present. Maple Annex, appraised for 1.26 million, sold for 1.3. Congratulations, a little bit higher. Miller Street School, appraised at 1.5, 1.58 million, sold for $500,000. Date street we still have. So now, we look at the value of our homes. They was taken, because you foreclosed on people homes and basically taking homes from the seniors. Now you flipping schools without a camera. You taking the schools, now, when I say they, I'm talking about the state, I'm talking about charter schools, I'm talking about the investors, I'm talking about the developers, I'm talking about everybody who was involved in this conspiracy to take the South Ward and city of Newark. The residents have worked very hard to build up our network, and your charter schools and your investors and your developers have yet to sit down at the table and talk to the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. At this moment, I would like to recognize former board chairperson Marquesa Keel Lewis, who is present tonight. I'm requesting a motion-
Motion.
-so Mr. Keel can speak tonight. Motion.
Second, second.
Thank you.
Motion to allow by Mr. Padilla, seconded by Ms. Haynes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Marquesa Keel Lewis, 33 Vine Drive, Newark, New Jersey, former chair of the Newark Board of Education. I came here tonight because I'm very tired after last night. Last night, I spent a lot of time helping young people as we pulled down signs across the city that was very disrespectful and miseducating to our residents. I take it personal, because not only do I love this superintendent, but he's a boy from Higher Court Projects, where I was raised. And in Higher Court, what we said, when you come for one, you come for all. And if you're gonna put out information, put it out right, right? And the misinformation that was on them posters, I didn't see these posters in 2012 when Kami Anderson and some other folks was instrumental in trying to close down Martin Luther King Elementary School, a school that in seven years had six different principals, had five different turnarounds. And nobody advocated for those children. Nobody said that those children needed resources. What they advocated, and I heard, was shut it down, right? But people want charter schools to get a pass in the city. And if the public schools couldn't get a pass in this city, we're not gonna allow charter schools to get a pass in this city. If they're failing, they need to be closed down. If our schools had to be closed down, their schools need to be closed down, right? And I'm sick of some folks who walk around here, and they got a lot to say these days. But when Kami Anderson and Chris Surf was here, they were very mumbled. They didn't have much to say. But when one of us get in place, when one of us get elevated, we got a lot to say. But where was you? When them babies was down in Two Cedar Street, and we had a sneak pizza and tie to them for them to eat? Where was you? Where was the posters then? So I just came out to do a public service announcement, that if the charter schools won a war, they got a war. Because it's one thing for sure, right? I'm not an elected board member no more. Can't nobody bring me up on ethnic charges? And I can say what I want to say. And I'm gonna warn you, if you want to see Marquesa Keel Lewis from 2009, 2010, 2011, keep messing with LaRajah Leon, and you will see him.
Thank you very much, former Chairperson Keel Lewis. That concludes our speakers list. Ms. List? Ms. List, that concludes our speakers list. Ms. List?
We need a motion to approve finance and operation items. Those are the items under heading 13.0, 13.1 through 13.22. Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Norton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Padilla?
Board member Bledsoe-
I can't hear Ms. List.
Security, Ms. Cole, we're trying to proceed with our meeting, and board members cannot hear the general counsel, please. Thank you very much.
We have a motion by Ms. Norton, seconded by Mr. Padilla.
Ms. Cole, you're out of order. We cannot hear our general counsel.
Any discussion?
What's the question? What's on the floor?
We have a motion to approve items 13.1 through 13.22, finance and operations. Any discussion by board members? Any questions? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
I'm gonna abstain on 13.17, and I have a question about that item.
Do you want to ask it before the vote? The vote is going on.
I just would like to know if this principal for this company will have the capability or the capacity to handle the marketing for this district, considering they hold a full-time job at another institution?
Do you want the answer before the vote?
Ms. Val, do you want to answer? Board member Bledsoe, you want him to email you your question, or we can-
Because the response to the question will determine if I vote yes on this item.
I didn't hear you.
So the question is, the principal of this company holds a full-time employment-
No, I heard that part.
-with another institution. Will they have the capacity or the capability to do the strategies and marketing for the district in a manner that is acceptable to not only the superintendent, but to the Director of Communications?
The district, first of all, good evening, Board Chair, members of the board, members of the community, Superintendent Lyon. The district put out an advertisement for bid, and it was open to all vendors. It is the expectation of the district that the individuals who have responded to that bid would provide the services as requested. If those services are not provided, then it would be a breach of contract. And I must say that the district did not investigate, nor was it aware, nor should it be, that the person has a full-time job. Because that was not part of the conversation with regards to the solicitation. The solicitation was provided and publicly advertised for companies or individuals to respond.
So my question is, are we sure that they're able to commit to what's expected in the contract, considering their other outside obligations?
And my answer is that the district has the expectation that, yes, they will. Because if they do not, they're gonna be removed as a vendor, and they will have a poor performance record with the district in terms of having access to any other business with us.
And for the record, who will monitor that?
I beg your pardon?
For the record, who will monitor that?
That will be monitored by, we actually have an interim director of communications right now, who's handling several other areas. And this group is, this entity is expected to support her in her work. So it'll be directly monitored by her. It probably will be reviewed by my procurement department with regards to if there are poor performance complaints. And we're not gonna pay bills for services we don't receive. We don't do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Board Member Bledsoe. Ms. List?
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes? Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the items under the heading 14.0, general counsel, that is 14.1 through 14.5.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bledsoe?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gomez, was that? Who was the second?
Haynes.
Vice Chair Haynes.
Vice Chair Haynes, thank you. Any discussion by board members? Any questions? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve the items under heading 15.0, personnel. That is items 15.1 through 15.9. Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. Anderson, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bledsoe. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Board Member Bledsoe?
Just for the record, I'm going to abstain on 15.5, because that is a conflict for me.
15.5 add a personnel vote?
Yes.
So he's abstaining from 15.5 and personnel.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe, I understand you're abstaining on one item.
15.5 abstain, and yes on the rest.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes? Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to approve items under the heading 16.0, program and instruction.
Motion.
That is items 16.1 through 16.17.
Motion.
Motion by Ms.-
Second.
Murray Thomas, second by Ms. Gomez, thank you. Any discussion? Any questions by board members? Ms. Anderson?
Madam President, really quickly?
Board Member Bledsoe?
I just would like to know, I know that in recent years, we've had a number of the data sharing agreements. I just would like to know if the district is keeping an account when those data shared agreements expires?
Yes.
And when they began and end. Sorry. You keeping a record of that?
Ms. Madam BA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we are tracking those, and that would be under our enrollment and data group. We carefully monitor that information.
And these are annual approving agreements? These are annually approved?
Are they annual?
Yes, Val, we sign off on them.
It depends on the terms of the MOU. Some may be longer than annual, but it is rare that, you know, they would be for extended periods of time.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Board Member Bledsoe.
Any further discussion? Any questions? Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
I have a question.
Board member Vice Chair Haynes?
For 16.14, where is that gonna be at? The member running the mod standing for FP outcry out?
Can you repeat that, please?
What school will 16.14 be at?
Youth Outcry Program Foundation.
Which school will be working on that?
Department of Education.
I guess she's requesting to know, Youth Outcry will be providing their services to what MPS schools?
Good afternoon, good evening.
Deputy Johnson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendent, and community. We will definitely get you the names of those schools. We'll send the information to Ms. Daring for 16.14.
Thank you, Deputy Johnson.
Ms. Haynes?
I would like for it to be pulled before I put my vote in.
I'm sorry?
She wants an answer before she casts her vote.
No, don't. She can get an answer.
She would like to know the schools before casting her vote.
She- She-
What item is this under? But where is it under?
16.14.
Falls under program and instruction.
So where is Ms.?
Riley. Dr. Riley? She left. Madam Chair.
I don't know. She has to check that.
But it's relevant.
Thank you, Dr. Riley.
She doesn't know.
Sorry, we were addressing an Amistad matter. Dr. Riley, item 16.14.
Rob, if you could pull it up on the screen and highlight it, so Dr. Riley can see what item on the agenda we're trying to get an answer- item on the agenda we're trying to get an answer for?
Actually, open it up.
So what, what's the question? I, I know, I see it.
The question was 16.14, what schools are being impacted by that?
Okay, so I, I'm gonna need just to look it up because I, I don't remember offhand, and I don't wanna give you misinformation.
It's either yours or it's Ms. Granato's, 'cause it says it's at the hub.
It's actually a secondary, um, project, it's not Ms. Granato's.
Well, can we open it, or we will remove it? That's how we'll handle that item. We'll just remove it.
Superintendent Leon?
And if it's not too much to ask for, for 1611 as well?
So, parliamentary procedures, shall we-
It says it.
Madam Chair. Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, order, please. Board members, if you have your laptops, please open it up, go to ESP, expand your agenda, because we have the plan, the file attached, the summary of the item we're voting on, and this is something we should review prior to our board meetings. The description of the item is on our agenda electronically. If you don't have one, excuse me-
Madam Chair?
If you don't have one, I can lend you my computer so you can read the whole description.
I have my computer, and I'm also on that committee.
So, parliamentary procedures, shall we-
Wait, wait, I don't think Dawn has this screen. I don't think Dawn has this screen, she's on that committee.
It says Eastside High School.
That Dawn see it on the screen, and we can hand it over. Rob, can I hand her this monitor that's in front of us? No? Would you like for the summary to be-
I'm sorry. So the question-
You wanted to know the names of the schools?
The question was, what schools was this for? And it clearly says Eastside High School. So the question has been asked, and the question has now been answered. Is there any other school?
No, that's it. Four programs.
Thank you, Dr. Riley. Vice Chair Haynes, Eastside High School.
So then that brings me to another question. FP outcry is directly across the street from American History High, why are we importing students from Eastside to go to a program that is in the Central Ward? Why isn't that offered to the schools in that surrounding area?
I don't know, this item was reviewed at committee, I would have assumed that any questions would have been raised at that point in time. Do you have the answer to the question?
So-
Madam Chair.
It was discussed at the committee, and it may not have been, obviously it wasn't satisfactorily discussed at the committee. Um, the, um, the reason it's offered at Eastside is it's part of their, um, program, and they have paid for those services, or are paying for those services for their students. If you remember, we discussed internships, and this was part of it, so that's the reason why it's there. Why it's not, and, and I think if, um, Ms. Haynes, if you remember, we actually did discuss why it's not, um, across the street, we, we had no answer for that, simply, other than the fact that that, that school has not applied for it. That doesn't mean that we don't follow up with, um, trying to make sure that we have equity in terms of those internships. I heard you at that meeting and have followed up with, um, Dr. Santos.
Madam Chair? Yes, it is. Okay, board member Marie Thomas, and then we're gonna move on to-
I'm sorry, no, 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 that's not how this works. Uh, Ms., uh, board member Haynes-
Vice Chair Haynes.
Asked a second question, so we're doing that.
1611, Rob. 1611. So that one is going-
1611 is also Eastside High School.
It will be a mentoring services to Eastside High School students focusing on film industry, covering pre-production, productions, and post-production aspects of the work. Students will meet weekly with the mentors as part of their internship, no cost to the district. Vice Chair Haynes?
My concern isn't the cost, Madam Chair, my concern is the equity. Out of the two that I asked, both of those are specifically going to one high school. If I ask for the rest of them to get pulled, am I gonna get a different answer? I seriously doubt it, so there's where my concern lies.
Well, let's just look at this. Film industry is offered at Eastside Arts High School, um, and that's it. So, arts didn't apply for it, Eastside has the program, and so they did. I mean, remember, when we create the arts academies across the comprehensive high schools, it's gonna live at Eastside and Barringer only. None of the other schools will be even allowed to apply for this. If you're at Shabazz, you can't apply for this, you're the engineering high school. Apply for something about engineering. If you are a science school, you go science high school, that's who gets those items. So it's about not being equitable, it's about saying, this is where the program is, and this is where the services are. The item before, I don't understand why American History isn't applying for it, but it's at no cost to the district. If the principal wants to do this particular activity, and he believes it's gonna help move the arts program, the board should be applauding that.
Any other questions, Vice Chair Haynes?
Is the information given to all of the principals equitably so they can apply for these things? The ones that are qualified for these specific programs?
So the person who's, uh, who can apply for this is Arts High School and Eastside. I don't know about the other one, actually. Um, from what I heard, uh, Dr. Riley said that there was a program that was already occurring in the school with those students, right? Could we go, could we pull that one back up? The, I wanna be clear, uh, uh, the point that Ms., um, uh, Haynes is raising is good, because we do need to make sure that whatever is happening is happening across all of our schools. So could we pull up that one again? Do you know what this is, Dr. Riley?
Yeah, I do, so this is part of the Big Picture, um, initiative, which I guess has, and, again, this is before my time, but it's existed in the high school for multiple years, and one of the part-
One second, Ms. Dr. Riley, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No worries.
How long has Big Picture been at Eastside High School?
Good evening, everyone. Big Picture's been at Eastside for approximately 10 years.
Dr. Santos, is Big Picture in any other high school right now?
Not yet, but we are-
The answer was, is it in any high school yet?
We are working on that.
Is it in any high school yet?
No.
No, so if this is for students who are in Big Picture, there's only one place where it could go, no one else would apply for it.
Madam Chair? Again?
Ms. Haynes?
Madam Chair? Wait, 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 Marie, board member Marie Thomas, it's regarding the two items-
Yes, as Chair of PNI, I'd like to respond to our board members' concerns and offer some resources. I am. Thank you, board member Haynes, for raising this point. As we discussed last week in our committee meeting, this is absolutely something that we want to ensure, which is to make sure that the opportunities available to our students are available equitably, um, at the same time, it doesn't preclude opportunities that are currently available, uh, to, to be sought through, and so we appreciate what you raised, and the goal is to continue to make sure that even as us as a committee, we work specifically on continuing to hold the district accountable and supporting the superintendent's priorities to make sure that opportunities are accessible and equitable for all schools, so thank you.
Thank you, board member Marie Thomas.
Ms. Haynes? Ms. Hill? Ms. Murray Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Say that again, Ms. Jones?
Ms. Haynes voted yes.
She voted yes. Okay, that's it for the voting items, however, before we proceed, I just want, I have one request, if Superintendent Leon and our BA, Ms. Wilson, can please look into assistance for motor pool? Uh, I know that they're a little low with manpower and their vehicle is falling apart. I was on Broad Street driving, and one of the van doors happened to open while I was on Broad Street, and I know how hard it is, um, Ms. BA, to get the manu van, but if we can just look into the inventory for motor pool for that department, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Ms. Norton? Mr. Padilla? All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.
8:50.
Our next board meeting will be February 25th at Rafael Hernandez School, if anyone is interested in attending.